The Hamilton County Commission, September 12, 2019. All right, we're going to move right into a moment of silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you can. Thank you. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to do introductions real quick. So Leslie Hervey is at the end of the dais on the right-hand side. Next to her is Jackie Pianotto, Clerk to the Board. Commissioner Todd Portune is to my immediate right. To my immediate left is the Vice Chair of the Commission Stephanie Summer O'Dumas. Next to her is the County Administrator Jeff Aludo, and Legal Counsel Michael Friedman is at the end to the left. I'm going to move that we approve of the minutes from the previous session.
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. We've got a couple of presentations here this afternoon. I'd like to roll right into the Cradle Cincinnati Champions of Change Awards. Commissioner Portune, I'm going to let you call Ryan Adcock forward if need be. We do have a number of recognitions, but I'll leave it to you.
Madam President, thank you very much. And for those of you who are here for the brief ceremony before this meeting, you know that one of the issues that's truly been important to our county and our community has been the work that we have been doing over the last five-plus years, six years, I guess, to reduce infant mortality in the county. And if anybody doesn't know what infant mortality is, it is a measurement of the number of babies who die per live births before their first birthday. And for the longest time, the rate in Hamilton County was a true national scandal. We were either the worst county in the entire nation in terms of babies that died before their first birthday, or were within the top 10 counties in the nation for what seemed like as long as they were measuring that statistic. And the county stepped up. We worked collaboratively with leadership at Children's Hospital in the form of Dr. Jim Greenberg, who's the head of the Neonatal Institute there, Dr. Elizabeth Kelly at University Health, University of Cincinnati Hospital, and she is the head of their Pediatric Health Department there, and with others in both the private and public sector, and formed a new initiative on infant mortality reduction that is now popularly known throughout the county as Cradle Cincinnati. And Cradle Cincinnati, in just five short years, has been able to reduce our overall infant mortality rate by in excess of 20 percent. We've reduced the number of deaths in the county that are related to unsafe sleeping conditions by a figure in excess of 25 percent, and deaths that are related to smoking in the household or maternal smoking during pregnancy, or after, or other caregiver smoking, and deaths that are related to people conceiving in too short of a period of time, and that time is 12 months, after having given birth. Both in those two instances, the percentage of reduction has been double-digit percentage reduction of deaths in those two areas. And they, along with the safe sleep issue, have collectively reduced infant mortality by over 20 percent in the county. We're no longer the worst in the country, but we still are not the best either. And we need to strive for not only being that, but to get to a day when no baby dies before his or her first birthday. It's a tragedy to families and friends when that happens. And frankly, Cradle Cincinnati and this initiative, the county, we believe that we can't just strive to be better than the national average or anything like that because every death is unacceptable. The Director of Cradle Cincinnati since its inception is Ryan Adcock. And Ryan, if you'll come forward to the podium as I am finishing my introduction about you, you have been a true guiding light and force ever since you were engaged as the Director of Cradle. And Ryan has a great pedigree with this because my first work on infant mortality reduction occurred when I was on Cincinnati City Council, and, which was a long time ago, actually.
Mm-hmm.
And Ryan's father was then the Health Commissioner for the City of Cincinnati. And he and I together worked to pioneer the first public and private collaborative on infant mortality reduction in the region in that sense. And that work had many iterations, but ultimately it became Cradle Cincinnati. And Ryan is carrying on his father's work in exemplary manner. So with that as an introduction, Ryan, thank you for being here. It's an exciting day for all of us to honor the people who are making the difference and allowing us in the county to benefit from these reduced numbers. And they are also symbolic of all of the paid staff and volunteers on so many fronts that are a part of this tremendous effort that has made reducing infant death a real top health priority in the Hamilton County region. Ryan Adcock.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think one of the founding principles of our work is that there is no one organization or individual who can tackle something this complex on its own. So we like to hold this awards ceremony once a year to honor the really wide group of community members who've stepped in to lead on this. And that includes, you'll hear about today, important organizations like Healthy Moms &amp; Babes and the Cincinnati Health Department and Interact for Health. But it also includes a lot of individuals, and I'm really excited that we're honoring someone like Demita Wright today, who has really stepped into this and said, "This is my issue too, and it's really important to me." So it's really an exciting day for us just to try to recognize in a small way all of the hard work that goes on throughout the year. And perhaps before we begin, I wanted to do something a little different this year, which is recognize that there is one individual who is perhaps most important over the course of the past decades-long fight in this, and that is Commissioner Todd Portune. And so we've actually gone ahead, absolutely. We've gone ahead this year and created something new called our Founder's Award and made this up for you. And so I would like to present this to you, but before I do so, if I can do so without tearing up, would just like to personally thank you. I think back before we knew each other well to one of my first memories of you, and it was watching you in the Reds Opening Day Parade on crutches, walking the however many mile-long route that is. And there was this gap between the float that was maybe ahead of you and you because you were walking on crutches. And I saw you, and I knew you a little bit at that time, and I thought, you know, this is a man with tenacity. This is a man who, when he sees something that he wants to get done, he will get it done. And that is what has been the case for infant mortality reduction for a long, long time. There is no way these numbers start to move without a community leader who just will not give up. And you just would not give up on this. And I'm so extraordinarily grateful for that and the impact it's had on my own life. And then beyond that, personally, wanted to take the chance while I have the microphone just to thank you as a friend, as a mentor. You mentioned my father, and my father passed away when I was 24. And since that time, I have sought father figures around me who might play some level of role in that. And you have served in that way for me. It's been very meaningful for me. We've had the opportunity to talk about personal things in our life. You've given me great professional advice. And all of the work that we are about to celebrate this afternoon would not be taking place were it not for your leadership. I'm going to come hug you. If I could encourage everyone to give you a standing applause as we do this.
All right. Thank you, Ryan, and thank you, Commissioner Portune. We are going to go ahead and read a little something about the Champions for Change as we present the awards. So Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to start with Sharon Johnson, if you can come up.
You have to come forward to the dais. You have to.
Thank you so much. This is also near and dear to me because I served as the supervisor for Every Child Succeeds through the Community Action Agency, and that's a First-Time Moms Program. So this is very important also. So Sharon, and excuse my, I have a little cold, but Sharon Johnson, at the heart of our work to reduce infant mortality, is building relationships with moms and removing barriers. Our Community Health Worker Champion Sharon Johnson is with Healthy Moms &amp; Babes. Sharon has been a community health worker with Healthy Moms &amp; Babes for the past five years, partnering with families to promote self-sufficiency, access resources, and reduce barriers to good health. She has experience and background to provide families with excellent, nonjudgmental guidance. Sharon has been praised by many families as being a dependable advocate, often attending doctor appointments with mom, maneuvering the mental health system, and assisting with Medicaid. She tailors her support based on the unique situations that impact each family. This is not an easy field, but it's Sharon's passion to help mothers and families to thrive. She has faced challenges, but she is perseverant and emphasizes the importance of connection with families. She is always eager to learn more, and she acts as a mentor to newer community health workers. By supporting newer community health workers, she extends her reach beyond just the families she works with and makes a bigger impact in our region. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right. Matt Davis. Is Matt in the room? There you are. Hi, Matt. We know that policies can affect the health and well-being of moms and babies in Hamilton County. Our 2019 Champion for Policy is Matt Davis, the co-founder and president of DSD Advisors, who also serves on Cradle Cincinnati's Policy Committee. Matt was instrumental in helping to form the structure of the Cradle Cincinnati Policy Committee and has always been willing to make connections to decision-makers in Columbus. He is directly responsible for the great successes of the Policy Committee in its first year. As an advisor, he has advocated for policies that help mothers and babies thrive in Ohio. Senators, representatives, and governors, Dwyane staff all understand that because of Matt's advocacy work. He was key in developing the provisions of House Bill 11, which supported and expanded group prenatal care efforts locally. And he has not only created a culture of health and support locally, but also has helped policies that will reach all moms and babies in Ohio. Congratulations, Matt.
Thank you. Congrats. Thank you so much.
Are you getting Portune next? All right, Todd, you're next.
Madam President, thank you very much. It's my honor and privilege to introduce the Safe Sleep Champion, Tamika Gray. So far in 2019, as many as 13 babies have died from a sleep-related death in Hamilton County. Babies sleep safest when they are alone, on their backs, and in a crib. Our 2019 Safe Sleep Champion is Tamika Gray, the Cribs for Kids Program Coordinator at the Cincinnati Health Department. Providing a safe sleep environment is something that is essential to reducing sleep-related deaths. Tamika leads Cribs for Kids, which provides pack-and-place to families around Hamilton County. Since 2016, they have given out more than 1,767 cribs to families throughout the county. Tamika radiates warmth and trust, which allows her to build strong connections with families. And through the Cribs for Kids Program, she has collaborated with many agencies like women's shelters, home visiting programs, hospitals, and nonprofit organizations. This network that Tamika has established makes it easy to spread information, to connect families with resources, and to promote safe sleep throughout the Hamilton County community. Ladies and gentlemen, again, your Safe Sleep Champion, Tamika Gray.
Okay. Champion for Equity, Bryce Mickey. Come forward. Black women, regardless of socioeconomic status, are two to four times more likely to experience infant loss. We recognize the importance of someone who understands equity and shares that knowledge with others. The 2019 Champion for Equity is Bryce Mickey from Avant Consulting. Okay. Okay. Avant Consulting is a group that helps organizations become more inclusive through equity and diversity training. Bryce's passion for social justice is at the forefront of his work. He was a student participant, staff participant, and later a facilitator of the Social Justice Training Institute. In his role with Avant Consulting, Bryce partners with many local organizations to foster open, intergroup dialogues around equity. He has provided implicit bias training with big health systems such as TriHealth, University of Cincinnati, and the Cincinnati Health Department locally that serve pregnant women in Hamilton County. Bryce understands the importance of being an active listener and shows up for all the equity trainings with an open and positive attitude. He engages the learners with thoughtful stories in preparation and runs marathon learning sessions with grace and poise. In 2018, he was awarded the university-wide Dr. Marion Spencer Equity Ambassador Award, as well as the Student Affairs Equity and Inclusion Award. Champion of Equity, Bryce Mickey. Congratulations.
Bryce, thank you so much.
All right. Next is Dr. Jennifer Williams. Congratulations. Innovation begins with knowledgeable leaders who are courageous enough to share their ideas with the world. Our 2019 Champion of Knowledge is Dr. Jennifer Williams, the Science Physical Education and Health Curriculum Manager for Cincinnati Public Schools. Dr. Williams is an educator in our community with a passion for social justice and equity. Her experience with the education system spans from college to kindergarten. Last year, she collaborated with local healthcare professionals and teachers from CPS to create the first comprehensive health wellness curriculum for grades kindergarten through 12 that is age-appropriate, medically and scientifically accurate, and adopted by the Board of Education. This was not an easy feat. It required a creative and determined leader to bring professionals from different disciplines together to create and implement this curriculum. When implemented, this curriculum will reach over 35,000 students in CPS. She is also leading the first-ever annual health fair and exploration for all 10th-grade students in CPS this September. Congratulations. Oh, 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 sorry, sorry. No, no, he's the most important.
Madam President and ladies and gentlemen, it's my privilege to announce the Cradle Cincinnati Champion for Better Care, Dr. William J. Moravec. I understand Dr. Moravec could not be here today. Accepting for him will be Ryan Adcock, the Director, I think, unless there's someone else here. Ryan?
That's good.
All right. I have a few things, though, to share about Dr. Moravec, and then we'll move on to the next one. Cradle Cincinnati is dedicated to improving prenatal care for all moms in Hamilton County. Our 2019 Champion for Better Care is Dr. William Moravec, University of Cincinnati Medical Center physician who specializes in obstetrics, gynecology. His pioneering work with Start Strong led to the reduction of extreme preterm birth in the Cincinnati neighborhood of Avondale. Dr. Moravec is unable to attend today, but we're going to make sure he not only receives the award, but that he also is aware of the great recognition and acknowledgement that he got from all of you here today. So, Ryan, if you will accept his honor behalf of Dr. Moravec.
Okay. Our next recipient is Community Activist Champion, Demita Wright. Please come forward. Devoting your time and resources to your community can be time-consuming, but the value is immense. Our 2019 Community Activist Champion is Demita Wright, a program facilitator with the Society of Inner Arts. Demita is an expert in mindfulness and yoga and has more than a decade of training. She has spent the past five years creating and facilitating community-based wellness programs designed for women to build community with each other while learning tools to manage stress, which is a large factor in premature birth. She offers these yoga classes locally to black moms and communities most adversely impacted by infant mortality. Demita is part of the Advisory Board of Queens Village, a supportive group of powerful black women who come together to build relationships and take action in their community. She has been an instrumental member of the Cradle Cincinnati Policy Team by being a strong voice that represents families in our community. Congratulations, Demita Wright, community activist.
All right. We have two to go. Our second-to-last is Trisha Schaefer. Home visitors partner with parents to provide tools around child development and positive parenting. Our Home Visitor Champion for 2019 is Trisha Schaefer, a home visitor with the Every Child Succeeds Pathways to Home. Trisha has been a home visitor for 20 years. At the forefront of her work is a goal to build relationships that are strength-based and empowering. She is flexible yet dependable when working with families and realizes that all families need individualized approaches. Trisha's ability to grow relationships transcends her work with families and includes other professionals as well. She provides referrals and partners with others that are in her client's support circle. She is a strong advocate for home visitation and has recently, oh, you were recently featured in the Cincinnati Inquirer in an article. Home visiting is a difficult occupation, but Trisha has overcome barriers and remains as committed today as when she started. Congratulations.
One more? We do have one more champion to recognize, and then after we do, Madam President, starting with you, I'd like to invite all of our champions forward for a group photo with Director Adcock as well in a part of that. So, ladies and gentlemen, it's privileged to introduce to you the Champion for Smoke-Free Women, Julian Collins. Smoking is a hard habit to break, but a necessary one, especially during pregnancy. Our 2019 Champion for Smoke-Free Women is Julian Collins, a Community Outreach Officer at Interact for Health. Before joining Interact for Health, Julian spent four years with the American Lung Association in Cincinnati. He developed and implemented professional training on lung health and chaired a citywide coalition for tobacco-free living. Now with Interact for Health, he has worked on smoking cessation initiatives with Planned Parenthood, Cincinnati Metro Housing Authority for Tobacco-Free Housing, and has an advocate to successfully pass Tobacco 21 through the City of Cincinnati. Great piece of legislation, Julian. Thank you for that. He provides guidance to other organizations in Cincinnati on regarding smoking cessation, programming, and education. His expertise is a vital asset to the community and to the health of women and babies throughout all of greater Cincinnati. Ladies and gentlemen, again, your Champion for Smoke-Free Women, Julian Collins.
Could you all come up, please? All the award winners, please come up. Let's give them one more round of applause.
You go first. I'll just stand here.
All right. Thank you so much. See, every now and again, we get to do something fun here at the County Commission. We've got one last thing, one more recognition. It's the Proclamation Declaring National Emergency Preparedness Month. I know Nick Crossley is here. There he is. So, Nick, I'm going to ask you to just reference the purpose for the resolution. We're declaring September 2019 as National Preparedness Month. And I know this is about folks being prepared in the case of an emergency. And if you could give us a very short synopsis of what this is about, we'd appreciate it.
Sure. It's just an opportunity every year across the nation that basically every community I know declares this National Preparedness Month. And it's sort of an honor of 9/11, started after that. But obviously, as we've seen more and more disaster and large-scale emergency events, and seeing the pain and suffering after that, that we know that if residents are prepared for disasters, that they'll be able to respond and recover faster and hopefully have lesser impacts from the disaster. So this is an opportunity for us to focus. We focus year-round, but focus in one month where we do multiple types of events. So we started out this month with testing two of our warning systems, the wireless emergency alerts, where I can send emergency messages to cell phone towers, to cell phones, and then we test our outdoor warning sirens. We have multiple events throughout the month, both training and education for residents and for first responders. So, for example, today, we're in Greentownship doing hazmat training with their fire department. And then it culminates with many events that Emily Johnson, my Public Information Officer, is coordinating around the county. We're doing a mass casualty exercise down here at the Red State. We're doing a mass casualty exercise down at the, down here at the Red Stadium next Thursday morning from eight to noon, and so that's an opportunity for us to look at our response systems, and that if we have some kind of event where it's casualty, not a fatality, but a casualties, where we have to transport large numbers of people, that everything from the responders to the coordinators to the, to the healthcare system can handle that influx. So, again, it's an opportunity just to highlight preparedness. While government is here to help, government cannot make people whole after a disaster, and so we're just trying to encourage people to think about that. And then, of course, I always have to promote alert, Hamilton County, so, and Smart 911, so if you haven't signed up, if you, I like to say this, if you can't get an alert in Hamilton County, you're not trying. We do everything down to calling you on your phone, and so I think it's a great testament to both, all the Commissioner's support for our program. I wanted to take a moment, I know this is a little off-script, but Commissioner Portune was on the Hiring Committee when I was hired almost five years ago, staunch advocate from the day I got here about his vision for emergency preparedness, not only for all residents, but especially with people with disabilities, and, and has been a staunch partner of ours and actually a mentor to me as well, as I learned the Hamilton County community. I have 49 communities and 800,000 residents, so he was my ambassador, if you will. So I just want to mention, I work closely with all of you, and I very much, we, the program appreciates it, but Commissioner Portune, if I can just say publicly, a lot of, a lot of these systems and everything are a testament to your persistence over the years and wanting to have a strong program in Hamilton County, so I just wanted to say that to you.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was nice, thank you.
All right, we're taking a photo. Taking a photo. Great, thank you. Thank you. All right, thank you, and thank you all for your patience. We're going to move in, we're going to skip the comments and motions by Commissioners and go into the public hearings because we are past due. The first one on the agenda is a hearing to consider the vacation of a portion of Blue Rock Road. I only have three speakers' cards for this, and I'm hoping that people will be respectful of the two-minute time limit so we can get everyone's point of view heard. Jeff, do we have a -- oh, hey, how are you?
Very good, Jackie Leslie, thank you. I'm just teeing it up, I'm Bob Highcamp with the County Engineers Office. John Stewart, John Stout, and the White Oak Christian Church has requested a vacation of a portion of Blue Rock Road. It's Eastman Rightaway, the rightaway is just south of the new Blue Rock and Chiviet Road intersection. On August 15th, the Engineers Office submitted a report and recommended the vacation. I have any questions, or I'll be around for questions.
Thank you, and thank you for sticking around. I have three speakers' cards, so let's get to the public comment. Tom Abercrombie is first. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, how are you?
Good.
Brian Dormand and I are, that's here, from White Oak Christian Church, weren't supportive of everything they're doing.
Oh, gosh, I love this.
How's that?
Are you going to concede your time, and that's, that's that? Very good. Very respectful, thank you. Our final speaker's card is Gerhard Schmidt. Welcome. Got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
Thank you. This appears to be a leftover from the change that the county decided on moving Blue Rock Road. I have a question of why wasn't it done at that time?
Is that your, is that the end of your testimony?
Well, depending on the answer, I might have a question number two.
What is your question number two?
This is all property of the church, is that correct? And if it wasn't done at the time and it was overlooked, I'm asking whoever prepares this, I guess that's the county engineer, the Commissioners and the Board, to make a corrective action the next time you do a change, and you have these leftovers that have to be done years later, that you really do everything at the same time, that you make that change? I mean, this is costing extra money for everybody and everything. I don't know why it could not have been done when everything else was done. All the property was purchased, land was moved, roads were put in, money was paid out to people who owned the property, and now, years later, we're, you know, revisiting some old issue and giving this all back and releasing the right of way to the church.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, and I think, do you want to respond? Yep.
I forget his first question, but.
It's about the timing, the timing?
Okay, thank you. Basically, this vacation was discussed, part of negotiations for the property, for the property that was involved for the relocation of Blue Rock Road. The time it took was basically for myself and my staff and other issues that came up to prepare the documents and to present it today. I think there's one other thing he mentioned, there is actually two owners out there, the White Oak Church, Christian Church, and the John Stout. So, that's your answers. I'll try to do better the next time to get this more timely, but that's what time allowed.
Madam President?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the questions, Bob, is that you did not address, and sir, correct me if I'm wrong in, in sort of asking this, but this is what I heard from, from what you said, is why wasn't all this done or caught at the same time? Why are we now having a revisitation of the project and having to do more work and spend more money and all of that, as opposed to this being all properly designed and laid out and approved and the work completed at one time? Is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I really don't, I don't think I can quite answer the first question. The second question, as far as the amount of money or anything spent of that nature, any money that was, would have been spent at the, at earlier time would be the same money spent now, and primarily, as far as trying to think of the, why wasn't all done at the time, all I can pretty much assume is that we pretty much wanted all the construction and everything done out there to be done, finalized, and everything like that before we go ahead and put the vacation of the, of the right away. That's, right now, I'll try to look into it deeper if I need to.
Madam President, may I follow up?
Yes.
So, Bob, when you say same amount of money as was done the first time, are you saying we are now spending a second-like amount, or are you saying that the total dollars approved with the first look at this were not all spent, and within that original allocation and reservation of funds, the balance of the work, what you're presenting to us today will now be paid out of that?
Basically, no, it's not being paid twice. It's, reason why I'm hesitating is because all the work that, for the survey cost and everything like that was done by, in-house by, by myself and my staff, and any of the costs of the public hearings was borne by the property owners. So, no, I don't believe there was any more additional money or money paid out twice, if that answers your question.
I'm not sure I'm, it does, I'm still a little confused, but I think that, that it's something, what I'm, what I'm really hearing you say, Bob, is you're going to have to go back and dig on this and come up with the, the final answers to the questions that were raised.
Possibly, but I just know, this is, my understanding, this is part of negotiations with the church to have this done.
Yeah.
To have this vacation done. I guess maybe that's what I need to write down, is I don't, I'll have to find out if any of the money that was put aside for this was involved with the original project. I think that's the question I'll have to find out.
Can I just interject? I think the point is that it would have been more efficient to do it all at once. I mean, I think that's the point you're making, and so I think there is an attempt by the Engineers Office to do that, to save dollars, and you have somebody out there doing the work, you might as well have them do all of the work. I mean, I think that's your point, so, I, point taken, that maybe we could have been a little more efficient on this one. So, with that, that is the last speaker's card that we have, from the administration, then, so we obviously opened the hearing. I would like to move to close the hearing. To be clear, you're not objecting to the project, you were just objecting to the timeframes.
Correct, and to your last point, somebody should put corrective action in place so that we're not doing this again on any project that you have, and maybe that should be a question you ask to the people presenting the project. Have you done everything?
Understood.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, appreciate the clarity.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I just add to this? Because, sir, the question you raise is a very good one, and I think we all agree that if, if we can do all these things at one time and one time only, it's much more efficient and saves money, which is the point here. We do have a policy in place, when we're do, when we do road projects, is to look at other internal county operations that might require a street opening or work done on the street in the same area as a particular project that the engineer might be addressing. Also, reach out to utilities like MSD and Duke Energy, Waterworks, Time Warner, Spectrum Cable, or whatever the cable companies are, to see if they have anything planned within a six-month window before or after the scheduled date for the work that is in front of us, and try to get everybody to cooperate so that everything is done at one time, and you're not constantly opening a street or, you know, repaving again and again and that sort of thing. So that is adopted county policy. There are occasions where something might be unforeseen that materialize later, I don't know whether that applies to this or not, but we'll get final answers for you on that, all right? Thank you for the question.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for being here. I'm going to move to close this hearing.
Second.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our second hearing is a, it's a continuation, really, of a hearing we started last week to consider the Zone Case Columbia 2019-01, Cambridge Retail from C Single Family Residence District to EE Planned Retail District. We're going to get a quick, I think we do already have kind of the overview on this, but if you could give us a three-minute synopsis, that would be helpful, and then we're going to move right into public comments.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, everyone, John Huth with Planning and Development Staff. Yes, this has been continued since last week. This is a Zone Map Amendment Request in Columbia Township, and if approved, this would allow for a 62-space parking lot to serve the existing dealership next door. We have provided a map which shows the location of the site, and we've also included behind you the site plan showing the proposed parking lot and buffering as well. I'm going to be brief, rather than three minutes. If you have questions for us, we'll be on standby to try to answer any questions that anyone has.
Oh, very good.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move into the speakers' cards. Jim Carroll is our first speaker. Welcome. Pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
Madam President, I'm Jim Carroll, I'm an attorney with Corson Bassett, I'm representing the applicant, Wusti Investments. We were here last week, I think most of our presentation was made at that time, so what I've done is I've, you know, I know that the Commission had questions during the hearing process. I'm here, I've arranged for some professionals and other people to be here to be responsive to any inquiries that the Commissioners may have, and so, you know, I think that's what we'll conclude at that point, and just let you proceed with that. Since I've got a bunch of time, can I yield my time to Chris Wannenberg, who's also requested to speak?
Okay.
And if he can come up and W U N.
All right, very good, we'll extend his, or use the rest of his time and then give you two minutes. Thank you.
My name's Chris Wannenberg, I'm Director of Development, Schumacher Dugan Construction, and we are the project manager and contractor on the, on the proposed project, and did the original project for the Wusti Group. I have sent, I have submitted to the Council, a copy of the Columbia Township Plainville Road Corridor Public Special Interest Strategic Plan. The reason I did this is because some questions were raised that are addressed specifically in this plan. The plan was created in 2005 through a process with the township, and in 2006, it was adopted by the, by the County Commission. In 2011, it was reviewed, and in 2017, it was reviewed and continued adoption. Specifically, I have given you, I have marked a section of this where we talk about the buffering. Some questions were raised about buffering, and there's two different kinds of buffering. Basically, they call a streetscape requirement, which is along the, along the frontage of Cambridge Avenue, in this case, along Plainville Road, in this, in this project. And then there's a boundary buffer requirement that's between the two uses, between, in this case, between the residential use and between the expanded commercial use. The whole project and the whole, the whole proposal is about expanding the commercial use into the residential district and how it's to be done, and a lot of thought was made about it. So when we talk about the boundary buffer requirements in the yellow that I've highlighted, they're talking about between the end of the expanded new use, which is retail, and how it addresses the residential. And they call for, in action, that the boundary buffer requirement of the zoning resolution is modified such that the range of buffer widths is reduced from the 10 to 60 feet that's in the Hamilton County zoning resolution to 10 to 20 feet. And the 10 to 20 is depending upon the intensities. There's a rationale given. The most common type of buffer is required between commercial uses and residential uses, because intensity is determined by the coverage, which is the higher the lot coverage, not, not the intensity of what's used in it, not whether it's a 45-foot building or it's a parking lot, it's how much ground you cover. Now this, now my, my, my two minutes now?
No, I think that was.
Oh, that's my three? Okay.
Yeah. So please, is there a summary sentence?
Yes, ma'am. It says right here that some uses would require the 60 feet. This size of buffer is unrealistic, and given the small size of the parcels and limited depth of property, a 20-foot-wide buffer would provide enough area to locate the required landscape materials and would offer adequate protection of adjacent single-family homes from noise and light nuisances typically associated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I assume you'll hang around for questions as well.
I will.
Appreciate that, thank you. Bruce Kennedy is next. Welcome.
So, since we're talking, going to the comprehensive plan, I have just three pages of the comprehensive plan, and one of them highlighted, there. Show what we're looking at here, this is the updated comprehensive plan.
You have to go in front of the mic?
From 2017. And that first page shows you how broken up Columbia Township is, and so it's very important to look at areas in the comprehensive plan that are specific to Madison Place South, because that's the way it's laid out. And if you look at the map, it's in blue, there's a legend, and the blue is Neighborhood Business Corridor, which includes a little red area there that's put on that one to show the four properties in question. There's also a dotted line there in an oval shape that is a redevelopment area that those four houses, lots, residential parts are not in. And then on the third page I gave you, it just says the description for a Neighborhood Business Corridor. Low-intensity, mixed-use retail, service, office, residential uses that are neighborhood-oriented and provide a smooth transition from retail and service development to the adjacent neighborhood, or residential neighborhood. Unless we're talking about some other neighborhood, this proposed plan that they have, it does not provide a smooth transition, nor is it neighborhood-oriented, so I don't think it fits the comprehensive plan. Now, our trustees and administrators have given their stamp of approval on this despite strong opposition from all of us immediately affected. All you have to do is look at the website, see the pictures. Instead, they want to argue what a great boon to the community Mr. Wusti has been, and he's, he came here for a business decision and he got a huge tax. he's -- he came here for a business decision, and he got a huge tax break. You know, it's not a charity. And final note, government is supposed to be for the people, and this includes quotations "these people." Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Rebel. Welcome.
Hello, I'm John Rebel. I'm a resident of Columbia Township. I have a question. Are there going to be any building constructions, or are there going to be an increase of the size of the buildings that are there? Or is this merely all a parking lot?
Jim, do you want to come up quickly and answer the question?
If I may. At this time.
I'm sorry. Is that your only question?
I have two points to make, but I just wanted that question asked. No, would you please answer the question?
Yeah, Jim, go ahead and finish. I'm sorry. I shouldn't have interrupted you.
As shown on the plan, there is an area that where a building could go. One of the conditions of the approval of this zoning is that if we intend to build, we have to come back through the process, and we've agreed to that condition. So is there anything planned right now? No.
Thank you. Yes, your second question.
I think for all new constructions, especially where it's a part of a variance, we should have a forward-looking policy, and all natural gas buildings should be heated, buildings should be prohibited. Many communities in this country are adopting building codes to prevent natural gas heatings in building in order to minimize the production of methane gas, which is 100 times stronger than CO2 with regard to greenhouse gases. Then the other thing I think you ought to consider, in any expansion of an automobile saleship, is it going to be successful, or is it going to be a flop? And are we going to have a John Nolan neighborhood blight sitting there in a few years? Now, President Trump wants to impose a 25% tariff on German vehicles. Joe Biden says there are going to be millions of vehicles off of the road, and I know from my personal experience and some of my neighbors, when they're driving an electrical, say, a Tesla, they're better performing than these Porsches, they're safer, and actually, they're cooler. So I see their market shrinking in the future, and I see they're going to have big problems of sustaining a business there. And what happens when the business fails? It's going to be a blight on the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathy Ryan.
Madam President, I have nothing more to add.
Okay. I'm going to save you in case you do in a minute. Tim Meyer is our next speaker.
If I may, can I defer my time to rebuttal from Chris Wannenberg in the future?
Sure. All right. I'm going to put you to the side as well.
Madam President, there may be a number of proponents who will yield time if this is.
Okay. Well, I'm just -- I'm going to keep a different stack in case people come forward. Here's what we're going to do. Now, I now have a stack going of people that have deferred their time for the time being. If you choose to speak, we will give you your two minutes, and you can just ask me that you come forward. Okay? All right. So our next speaker then is Osama -- I can't read your last name.
I can add you to the same.
Very good. Kelly Blair is next.
That would be me. You can add me into the house now.
It's a large pile now. A.J. Murphy.
I'd like to get into the house while this goes.
On the pile. Bill Wusti, or Wusti, I'm sorry.
I think.
You're on the pile. Jim Woodall.
The name, please.
David Kibicki.
I'm not on the pile.
You're not going to be in the pile. All right. I've never had a pile like that going before, so.
And I think some of these people of Mass are going to defer some of their time to me, but I'll try to be brief. My name's David Kibicki, and I'm president.
To be clear, let's do two minutes now, and then we can get to that if we need to.
Okay. All right. My name's David Kibicki, and I'm president of the Columbia Township Trustees, and I want to make it clear that we worked hard to get here. It's hard in these two minutes to really establish what's taken place over the last six months, working with the owners, the attorneys, the architects, and four different automobile franchises to come up with this plan. We did listen, and I do care. I really do. And monumental compromises were made, and I really worked hard to make everybody happy here, and I really hoped we could have. And we still need this business in Madison Place. Don't anybody lose sight of that. Those buildings went vacant, that would be a catastrophe. But in 2005, we did the Columbia Township Master Plan, working together with Hamilton County. Hamilton County and Columbia Township worked together to create the comprehensive master plan. And in that -- on that committee, in that plan, were 14 people in the vision committee, 24 people in the focus group, in addition to Hamilton County planning experts, et cetera. And I'm going to give you a couple quotes of the comprehensive plan, with input from citizens, planners, public input, and surveys and comments at township open houses and meetings. It also goes on to say the document is official in nature, meaning that some of the local government should adopt it into local law. The document should then be used as a policy to guide decisions about development in the community. When consistently applied, the comprehensive plan has value as a decision-making tool and provides the foundation for legal basis in protecting the community. The plan provides a foundation for future zoning, which governs the use of the land. Columbia Township and Hamilton County worked on this plan together. We did it together, with your staff, your experts, your expertise with Columbia Township. We own this. Okay? On Columbia Township's website, it says it's to provide an official position that property owners can count on. That is off your website. So, and this was done in 2005, before I was even a trustee and before Mr. Wusti even invested in Madison Place. This plan was updated again in 2011 by presumably a new group of people from the community that worked on it, people from the boards were different and everything. So, and also was updated in 2016 by another group of people. That's a lot of people that have seen this and a lot of input from residents that have taken place, and it was ratified each time.
So I'm going to -- I know I have questions about the plan, so your two minutes is up. We will get back to this, though.
Can I defer? Can I get some more time? Because I have a few things more to say.
What's your name? Say it again.
I'm Bill Becker.
Got it.
Okay. And obviously, when Mr. Wusti invested in 2005, his auto dealerships were in acceptable land use, and he was sorely needed -- not only were they in acceptable land use, he was sorely needed to stabilize Madison Place's heavily blighted Plainville Road, which we described in the past. The land use plan clearly indicates that Mr. Wusti was then in 2007 and is now permitted and welcomed to use this land for what he's trying to use it for. He's doing exactly what he was promised to do by both Columbia Township and Hamilton County, both of us together, working on this together. And to not honor our plan would create chaos in our township and deem the master plan as worthless and not just our businesses, but our residents as well. We need to work on a positive solution together to make the right amount of small negotiations to make this thing work with the trustees and the commissioners, because if not, it's going to put the commissioners as a seat at the table with every single meeting I take with future property owners as to how we can get things done, if you guys take a position that is different than ours. And right now, I'm even working on a nice, enticing, new signature restaurant to go in our old firehouse. It's this local celebrity chef that wants to be there. His biggest concern's future parking. What do I tell him? Can he go tear down a house in the future based on a comprehensive plan, or can he not? And I would literally have to ask each of you guys to come to the meetings with me because I don't know what to tell him if we can't support each other. The bottom line is until this case ends, I can't in good conscience make promises I'm not sure I can fulfill. I need you guys to support me on this. As I said before, when Mr. Wusti and his team first brought this project forward, it was a 28-and-a-half-foot-tall spaceship, Porsche dealership. The people over Porsches, the people expressed their concerns, and I listened, and I cared. The township listened, and Bill Wusti cared, and he cared about what we were going through and what they felt, and he compromised. As Mike Lemon and I both said, it's the biggest compromise I've ever seen. The Porsche building is gone. It is gone. Now, we're talking about a parking, I mean, a parking facility with no structure on it that will be landscaped, and it'll be landscaped to the point where I don't even think you're going to see it. So that said, I want to make it clear, we need to support the rules that we all made together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jen Bryant.
I'm in.
In the stack. Okay. Doug Wusti is next.
You can defer my time, too.
All right. Rose Elkins.
So I have just some questions that can be hypothetical, I suppose, or you can answer them. What's to prevent any developer from buying residential land and homes, knocking them down for parking, then getting a zone change to build whatever they want? What stops that? Why does zoning exist? Isn't it to protect everyone so everyone stays in their lane? Stays in the commercial zone, residents stay in the residential zone? The comprehensive plan, I got the impression from Mr. Lemon that it didn't have citizen participation, inadequate citizen participation. And in light of that, wouldn't it have been prudent then to take a narrower or more conservative approach to that comprehensive plan instead of barreling ahead with whatever specific plans a few interested but non-resident participants wanted? Those are my questions.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shirley Mall.
I would like to give my minutes, if I could, to Audrey Lloyd.
Okay. All right. Audrey, I've got you as well. So you've got the pleasure of the floor for four minutes.
This was briefly touched upon last week, the loss of the Dollar General. It's -- I don't think you guys understand how important that store was to our community. I know it's odd to think of a store being that important, but it was obviously centrally located. You could go in there, the people at the checkout would always, even if they were waiting on somebody, they'd always turn around and welcome you to come in. You were never under any obligation to buy anything. You could stay as long as you wanted. It was a combination, like a grocery store, like a Kroger or a Walmart, and part like five and 10. You could go in there, you could get over-the-counter medicine, you could get snacks, you could buy hot dog buns, hamburger buns, all that kind of stuff. There was at least one full aisle just of food items, like you could get microwave meals, pickles, salad dressings. If you had to make a cake, you could go in and get cake mixes, that kind of thing. Frosting, you could also get -- I'm trying to weave my way around the store. There was a whole aisle of beverages. You could go in and get soft drinks, you know, power drinks, all that stuff. You could go in if you had to, you were going to, like, a baby shower. You could go in and get all kinds of baby stuff. There was a children's area, there was a whole aisle of toys that you could go in, there was cleaning supplies in the back that you could get, say, 25% cheaper than you'd get anywhere else. It's just a store that we very deeply miss. I've met a lot of people lately, my neighbors, that when we talk about the loss of the Dollar General, they would say, "That was my store." And I would think to myself, "No, it was my store." Okay? We deeply miss, and I just want everybody to understand what a loss it was to the community. Moving on, expansion plans of Wusti. He bought out -- he's got more areas than just our Madison Place area, okay? He's got Beaumont out, or a very large dealership out on Beaumont. It's across from the Target out there. He bought almost six acres out there, so that's what he's using out there. When he bought here, combined with the Porsche dealership, the Dollar General, the old Larry Daniels property, and the homes that have since been demolished, we're looking at almost four acres. So we're still almost two acres short of what he's got out in Beaumont. Going on, it surprised me last week when there didn't seem to be any other options other than Madison Place. We're going to expand here no matter what. Some of these facilities maybe could have been swapped out. Take one part of the dealership here and move it out to Beaumont, since they do have two more acres out there. It just surprised me that there wasn't any more feedback from them than that. He's got a couple of -- he's got also buildings out in Union Township. There's a Honda East that's got almost 4.8 acres out there. There's also, interesting to me, there's three residential properties that he's bought. That goes back to 2011. Am I totally done?
That's four minutes.
That's four.
That's four minutes.
I'll wrap this up by saying that, you know, we're talking a lot about parking lots here. It's come to my attention that the employees of Wusti are still, to this day, are parking on the side streets of our region. I've seen myself, people parking on Grace, and they're walking up. There is -- so not only are they taking the parking space of the residents that live there, we have small businesses on those streets that if their patrons can't come there, that, I mean, what we're doing is basically providing Wusti parking from eight to five or whatever.
Thank you.
And, you know.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Our next speaker is Herta Larison.
I would like to give my minutes to Bruce Kennedy.
Okay. Okay.
Can this just be a small rebuttal to what Dave Kibicki said, our trustee, regarding -- he was talking about a small restaurant coming in the old firehouse, and that's also in the Neighborhood Business Corridor, I believe. But I think he can tell them that that shouldn't be a problem because that's a neighborhood-oriented business, not a parking lot and a service area. I think I cringe at saying just a parking lot because it's obvious they're planning on a service building. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Ty, and Les Hemmings Way has donated his two minutes to Mike Ty, so you've got the pleasure of the floor for four minutes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
First of all, I want to thank Todd Pertun. This is very emotional for me. Todd, we had a tornado in northern Hamilton County, and Todd came up with an enhanced alarm system under your watch, Todd. MSD, 1979, my house flooded. And when your house flooded, and that, you were on your own. Todd instituted a program from MSD that goes in and cleans people's basements out, under your watch, Todd. Todd has tried to fix our sewer rates. Our water rates are out of control. He's reached out across party lines, went to Washington, done all kind of, tried to lower our rates. Hopefully, you know, something can happen. Tried to fix the Paul Brown Stadium lease agreement.
We actually did find it.
Did you?
Yep.
Well, you're baiting him.
And it was a leader, and it was a leader. Maybe I only got two, four minutes, Todd.
Well, he's only got four minutes. Leave it go.
Okay. But he was a leader in the eastern corridor, and I wish one day there will, something will happen out there, Todd. For that reason, I want to personally thank Todd Pertun, your great public servant in our community and our citizens are better for your service.
Thank you.
Now, on this issue, this is going to take a lot of your efforts to figure this one out. I have some ideas. Vacate Cambridge Avenue, make it a cul-de-sac, give him that, you know. I got all kind of ideas. But ultimately, I think it boils down to the community wants -- we don't be looking at a parking lot, you know? The sidewalk on Cambridge Avenue needs to go away. We don't need a sidewalk to nowhere. Make that a buffer. That's a right-of-way there. Make that a buffer there. They're putting a sidewalk. It goes from half the block down to the car dealership. Eliminate that. Put a buffer in there. Anything to eliminate that. Comprehensive plan, I think we need to go back into the comprehensive plan. I think that block, 6,700 block of Cambridge, needs to go back to residential zoning, like it was for 80 years. Yes, I was on a 2005 comprehensive plan, and I did not envision this happening. Drainage, did you all get my pictures of the drainage issues we have in the neighborhood?
Yeah.
Okay. That needs to be addressed. Don't know where that needs to be. I think the township needs to step up. There's no drain in that block. Did talk to the attorney early on. He said that they're going to put a retention or whatever they call it, retention or attention pond. But I think there are some things that we can do as a community. First of all, I want to say one thing. This is my community. I don't want, I don't see this community tore apart anymore. We've all made statements, we've all made comments, and I wish, I think we all could take, wish we could take them back. But let's move forward, and hopefully you guys can figure this out, and we can all move forward. But thank you for your time, and Todd, you've been a true leader, a true gentleman, and this community is thankful for you, partner.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mike. Our next speaker is Debbie McLean.
Thank you. I've been a resident for 16 years at my location, and I will just have to say on a few things. The SPI project, the plan here, I've been a resident at my house. It's really hard to find out things that are happening in Columbia Township. Even when you call Columbia Township, sometimes it's hard to get answers straight to your face. So I want to say that this plan that has been talked about and reviewed and reviewed, as a resident that lives on that street, I've never been invited to review the plan and hardly ever get notifications for things, including some of these meetings that were down here from Hamilton County. So I am opposed to the plan. I'm not going to take a lot of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Joyce Monger.
My name's Joyce Monger. I'm a resident of 3921 East Street in Merrimont, just three blocks from the Plainville Road Porsche dealership. I'm a residential property owner in Madison Place as well, and I'm also a licensed real estate agent in the state of Ohio. I'm here today to ask you to deny this rezoning. I believe this request will be the beginning of a precedent that will enable commercial expansion into a historic and unique residential neighborhood whose assets will be changed forever. There are few places left with $100,000 to $200,000 houses in such proximity to the fabulous community life that Madison Place, Merrimont, Indian Hill, Kenwood afford. This change takes from the middle class permanently and decreases the diversity of the neighborhood. The risk of storm and sewer problems are real as we increase the asphalt area. We are experiencing floods as never before, and we are all aware of the inadequacy of our infrastructure. This request is the beginning of a very slippery slope. Trustee Dave Kubicki said in his remarks to you that they're working on deals, and those deals may require that we take down further residences. Your actions today will be precedent-setting. Concerns have been raised about potential tax-based loss in reference to the master plan. As far as the master plan is concerned, it is my opinion that the master plan has not had true public input since 2005. In 2017, Jim Woodell, Wuste's general manager, was the only person on the comprehensive plan committee from Madison South, Madison Place South, sorry about that. As far as the tax dollars that Wuste provides, they are extremely important, I do not disagree. It is the job of our elected officials, however, to make these taxes work for the people. Madison Place currently has some of the highest millage of the surrounding communities. We need solutions that we can live with that have to do with living within our means like the rest of the people in this room. Thank you very much. I respectfully request that you unilaterally deny the rezoning.
Thank you.
I haven't been that long in Madison Place, about eight years, on Cambridge Avenue. And I just want to say, it would be inappropriate to put the very special cars in the exclusive Indian Hill residential area. And by the same token, it would be very inappropriate to have a storage area for them in our ordinary residential neighborhood. The comprehensive plan is flawed. It leads to favoritism, and more importantly, the disregard of property rights, a most basic right in a free society. The neighborhood is here long before the comprehensive plan, and there's always been an ebb and flow of businesses. When somebody can make a buck, they come in and make a buck. And when they can't overcome that, they leave, and somebody else comes in. We don't need this comprehensive plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alan Statman.
I would yield my time to Chris Wonover.
Okay, yes. Two more minutes.
I'd like to continue from where I was originally, and address the, and I've got several other people have yielded to me. Want to do two at a time, or you want to put four minutes up? Or how do you want to do it?
I do have a stack of other people, and I will ask them if anyone wants to reconsider whether or not you'd like to come forward. Let's, can we stop the clock for one second? Is there anybody else in this stack that would like, at this moment in time, to give two more minutes to the current speaker?
Well.
Okay, your neighbor. Okay, all right, let's leave it at that for now. So that's four minutes. Thank you.
I've got my two minutes, right?
Yep, I've got yours, yep.
So you see a six minute?
I'm sorry.
You call that right?
I think it's four, am I right? Yep, four. All right, here we go. Thank you.
All right, we were talking about the buffer between the uses, and that being agreed to in the plan, the 20-foot-wide buffer would provide enough area to locate the required landscape materials and would offer adequate protection for adjacent single-family homes from noise and light nuisances typically associated with commercial uses. And in fact, our plan that we've got shown here does have the 20-foot buffer. We have, in fact, and again, in accordance with this plan, we have doubled up the number of trees, and this is between our space and the first residential home. We have doubled up the trees, and it is, it is quite a screen from the residents to the commercial, to the area, which is a parking lot. And so we go from there to what is the streetscape. The streetscape requirements that we had, that's in the plan, it says, that requires a modification of the streetscape, calls for it to be the 10-foot area from the easement right-of-way into the property to be streetscape. And this plan calls for that to continue, unless there's a building there, and in which case the building moves into, the streetscape is eliminated. But where there's not a building, and specifically where there's a parking lot, it calls for that 10 feet, plus the 10 feet of right-of-way, to be as a streetscape. The streetscape that we have in the plan is per the, that is, actually, is the Plainville Road corridor streetscape that is currently along Plainville and comes up Cambridge to where this property starts. We will continue that through the property, which includes sidewalk, which includes street trees, which includes the streetscape trees in our 10 feet that includes the areas as called for in the plan, going to doubling up the number of shrubs, or doubling up the number of trees, and using smaller ornamental trees to appropriately reflect the smaller scale of the development. So we've doubled up the trees, and that's the area that's along at the bottom of it here, and that's Cambridge Avenue. We've doubled up the number of trees. We've still got the street trees along the sidewalk that's required under the plan, and we've doubled up the trees and shrubs in the streets, in the scape between the sidewalk and the parking lot. And that is in accordance with plan. We don't have an option of proposing something different than the plan. But the county commission and the Columbia Township can say, "Look, we don't want the sidewalk. We don't want the streetscape. We want something different." And if, in fact, in our belief that if the township and the staff of the commission comes up with something, we are more than willing to look at it and revise what we have here. Our plan here is exactly in accordance with what's required in the land use plan. Okay? My next issue will be stormwater when I get a chance to get back.
So at this point, we have exhausted the speakers' cards other than the ones that deferred. So I'm going to run through these one more time and see if anybody would like to come forward. So the first one is A.J. Murphy.
I'd like, actually, can I defer mine to Dan to the heat, please?
And I'll take it after the end, because I'm listening to a lot of the questions.
All right, I'm starting the stack. All right, so Bill Wuste. Same, is that?
I don't think anyone from the proponents needs to, you know, I think we're here, and I know you have questions, and these people, we can all be responsive to your questions. But at this point, I think the president.
I think that actually would work best. So let's, but I haven't distinguished who's who. So let me run through them, so.
And I just want to be here to address all the questions.
I got you, and I've still, we're putting them on reserve here. Jim Woodall?
No, ma'am.
Same, all right. Jen Bryant?
Please. I have a collection of photographs, some of which show the streetscape, and I would just like to provide that to the commissioner so they can see the buffer that it provides.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Kathy Ryan.
Good afternoon. Mr. Kubicki made quite the emphasis on the conformance to the comprehensive plan. Of course, that is why we are here today. Again, as I had mentioned in my letter, and I wanted to elaborate upon it just a bit more, again, how this use reconciles with the idea of a neighborhood business corridor, emphasizing neighborhood-oriented and a smooth transition is something that frankly I cannot comprehend. When you look at commercial corridor or regional commercial center within the plan, this use fits that to a T. Does the part of this use that consists primarily of vehicle storage fit it to a T? I am not sure. Again, that to me is even a more intensive use than the car dealership itself. And I would also like to point the board to 2017 comprehensive plan update, page 19, which mentions as a goal, "The quality of residential neighborhoods will be maintained, improved, and protected as desirable places to live." One of the first implement, one of the first strategies is conserve existing residential neighborhoods and districts. Now, I understand Mr. Kubicki's goal is to enhance and promote business development within the township, and I definitely respect that. However, to the extent that he has a concern that sometimes it takes replacing a residential house with a parking lot to facilitate that, again, it's sometimes that is appropriate. In this particular case, to not only get rid of part of the residential neighborhood, doing it under, within the scope of a rezoning, and that rezoning being something that frankly does not fit in any way, shape, or form into a neighborhood's scale, is grossly out of keeping with the comprehensive plan. I believe that the proponents have not shown you, but told you, that it conforms to the comprehensive plan, and I ask the board to deny the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Tim Meyer.
I would defer to Chris Wonover.
And Osama. Same, okay. All right, so I've still got a stack that I'm putting on reserve. So I know, and I'm sure we all have some questions, and I just want to offer a couple of thoughts and a couple of questions before we kick it around here. So thank you all for coming. It's been helpful to have everybody's input. I do want to note, I know we all got a lot of emails related to this issue, and I, for the record, want to introduce them. I don't think we did this last week. I've got a folder with seven emails against and 48 emails for. And that was strictly what we got related to emails, not related to the public hearing. So those should be entered for the record. I just want to start out, and I know we'll have a conversation about a couple of things. So I want to address or highlight two things that the residents have noted related to this development. One is the buffering. And I was unclear in the last hearing as to whether or not the buffering was related to the property line with the neighbor or to the frontage on the street. And so we've seen a plan, I don't know if that is different from what you guys had seen in the past, related to the buffering. And so I'm going to hold my comment on that other than to say that I understood the neighbors to be concerned about that, and so I am now curious as to whether or not some of those concerns have been addressed or not. The second item was related to stormwater, and we have to have a plan for stormwater when this kind of development happens. The question is, what's the plan? And we did, I think we all got the photos, or I don't remember if it was photos or videos, of some of the stormwater runoff. And I think that is an important question that we all need to ask ourselves, is what kind of stormwater retention is being proposed for the site, related not only to the site, but also any kind of runoff coming off and into the neighborhood. And then, lastly, I want to say that this master plan seems to be something that not everyone agrees to. I understand there's some history here, and it dates back to 2005, from what I've gleaned from the conversation. And I know it was said that it's been revisited, but it seems to me that there's a clear disconnect between different parts of the community related to the master plan. And so while this project, as I read it, and I've looked at a number, we've done some work here, I just do want to say with staff, and tried to reach out, and try to understand what the plan says, how this complies or does not comply with the plan. And so to my read of this, it is in the boundaries of the current plan. Whether or not that's appropriate is a different question. But to my read, it's part of what is the blue area of the master plan that, I guess, was anticipated for some kind of development in the future. I am not passing a judgment on whether or not that's appropriate. I'm just looking at the map. So I do want to note that and hope that at some point there can be a better understanding, community-wide, as to what is best suited for this master plan as things move forward. I mean, this is a moment in time, but I think there is some real potential for other moments in the future where we wouldn't have this kind of consternation about this development in this proposed master plan area. So I'm going to just leave it there. I know my colleagues have probably similar questions. And so let's, unless you're ready to, I just want to talk a little bit about the buffer, the stormwater. The master plan is a different conversation, and I think has to happen probably amongst all of you. Oh, for heaven's sake, wow. The public missed all of that, but that's all right. I'm most concerned about the people in the room, so that's all right. So why, if, I don't know who can answer.
Well, you want to do that?
Or do, let me defer. Do you guys want to ask your questions in conjunction? Or have individuals come forward and answer us one at a time? I have.
Madam President, I just have one question and then one comment. So if I can go in and ask my question.
Okay, well then, and I.
We've talked quite a bit.
Commissioner, are your questions similar in nature to mine?
They are, though I think I might have some minor nuanced differences.
Okay, in that case, I would like my questions answered. So let's, and I don't, I don't need a dissertation. I just need a quick response to the buffering issue. I don't, I don't know if this represents a change in what was put forward to begin with, or something.
The three questions, I think, I think it was three questions. Is, one was the buffering. The other one was the water issue. And I'm going to jump to the third, being the plan. There's nothing that we, you know, the Wuste group, I mean, we can't do anything about the plan, we're not. If I can, I'm going to, Mr. Kubicki, he's a trustee. I think he can be responsive to that, would that be?
That's fine, we can do number three first.
Okay. I guess I'll just address the master plan. Otherwise, I don't want to get into rebutting some of these other remarks that were there unless you want me to. I've mentioned in the past meetings that I think this is an unhappiness with the master plan. So I'd mentioned that I'm completely open-minded to revisiting the master plan, including some of the protection and more details as people talk about the Merrimont. including some of the protection, the more details, as people talk about the Marymont, some of their more protection, and really maybe dialing in deeper on this. With that said, the parking issue is when, on one hand, we have criticism, there's people that are, businesses parking in the streets, and the other hand, somebody else said we don't want to tear these houses down for parking lots because of affordable housing. Well, if we're going to develop anything in Madison Place, we do have to keep open-minded, that the businesses are going to need parking. I'm telling you, if we go do, try to do these little tiny gas stations and that, and we eventually want them to be boutique, they're going to have to have parking, period. So we need to be sensitive to that at the same time. But I think that, but I'm totally open to revisiting the master plan, and I think that is probably what we're all struggling with here. I mean, I have to follow the rules, the master plan needs to be revisited. And I want to make a suggestion on a positive note here, too, is I know Mike Tyes brought this forth before, I know Commissioner Dreehouse and Commissioner Portun kept, keep using the word buffer, buffering, when I look at those screening, buffering, whatever you want to call it, I kind of look at them as somewhat interchangeable, but, and us as commit, I mean, as township trustees, we were even willing to go sit down and talk and try to, try to suggest some, some things that might help move this thing forward. And that is that as we go look at the drawing here, is, we refer to Mr. Franklin's site, which is behind, is the buffering, as Chris was explaining. That's a buffer zone, and then we have streetscape. And what I've been trying to suggest is, is taking Mike Tyes' suggestion, I know when other people have jumped on it, is to, instead of making it a streetscape, because those sidewalks, if they go down Cambridge, end at Mr. Franklin's house. So it's, in theory, sidewalks that don't go to anywhere. What's that? Okay, and so the sidewalks, so the question is, is instead of having hardscape, could you turn it into a berm and streetscape, a berm that would get even more protection from seeing the cars, and really soften the, the whole idea of the cars themselves, that candidly, you won't even see them, and maybe even put a requirement that maybe add a few extra trees, because Mr. Woostie's already, already said, if you see that there's a gap anywhere, I'll stake a tree, I'll work with you, so we can put that as a matter of record. So I would suggest that together, we would ask, the township would see that as a positive way to move this forward, is maybe add a berm. Certainly, I'll let you work with Mr. Carroll on, on the water issues and everything else, and I'm willing to revisit the master plan, and I mean it. And I'll work with every one of the people in this room. I do care, and I do like to be liked, too, by the way, this is a drag, okay? I mean, this really is. And we did work hard, so I mean, there's a lot of moving pieces here.
And in fairness, I know there was a process that took place in the community. The challenge for us is that we weren't privy to that, and so this is our first foray into what would have been public hearings that already took place in the community. So we always feel a little bit at a disadvantage when these things haven't been worked out at the local level, and then we have to make a judgment call with a pretty limited amount of time. So thank you for that.
And one other, one other last thing I do want to address is, I know everybody keeps referring that they don't shop by Porsches and all that. We also don't shop at the Billboard Bench Company, we also don't necessarily shop at the bar, at the photography store. There's a lot of businesses that stabilize the community, that provide other resources for the community that you don't necessarily shop at. I just felt like that needed to be said as well.
Well, and as these things go, there's always a balance that needs to be struck, and the master plan should be the guide for that kind of balance in a residential area with a business district. And yeah, that's why I'm suggesting this master plan has become a very important document to this conversation, and if it's not, if it's not where it needs to be community-wide, then, you know, a revisitation of that, I think, makes some sense. Thank you for your comments. So the unanswered question then is related to stormwater. Well, he kind of answered the buffer question.
Okay.
But the stormwater question, because we have been shown photos about stormwater running off the property, I know that there has, by law, there has to be a plan, so could you just amplify a little bit?
Well, let me, just to follow up on, the, the plan as presented is in compliance with the township plan. There are some alternatives, the, well, what, a berm is what's been, what I've heard, you know, suggested. We have to go back through the township process and through the planning process, and you have your gentleman, but, you know, that's something we would be willing to consider. Now, hopefully, the final question then is the stormwater, and Mr. Ty did ask about that earlier, I believe, in the planning commission meeting, so I could answer your question, or I can get, you know, Mr. Wanberg, and we also have a gentleman from Kleiningers, who's the engineer, you know.
I have no preference. I just want an answer to the question.
But, well, yeah, and in fact, I don't know if we either presented or brought the pictures, at this point, all there is is a preliminary plan, because these, those plans don't go in till, you know, and they have to be approved by the Hampton County.
Before they're along.
So, but, but Mr. Wanberg and the gentleman from Kleiningers, because then you can have some authoritative, you know, response to your.
Right, thank you.
I will hit the, the big things, and then if you really want to get into some technical things, we'll bring Mr. Kleininger. Actually, his, his name is Woostie, but no relation, just happened to be an engineer for, for the Kleiningers group. There currently is no stormwater detention on the entire site. Why? Because the site was constructed well before there was any such a thing as stormwater detention, and even in 2007, when we constructed the existing, or reconstructed and remodeled the grocery store and IGA store into the current dealership, there was very minimal, we did some minimal stormwater issues that we addressed in accordance with what the county engineer requirements are. Now there's a completely different requirement set. And, and the construction of, the reconstruction of the Dollar General store and the construction of the parking lot that is vehicle display area is, does require, in accordance with your county engineer, a stormwater detention program. There's currently none there now. We will be putting in, per the county requirements, a retention structure that will be underground. It's, it's a series of, of underground pipes that connect to each other, and you cover it over with gravel, and then you, you put the parking lot on top of it. And it is required approximately 5,600 cubic square, cubic feet of stormwater storage. That meets the requirements of the county engineer. We have designed and requested the Kleiningers' design, and we have a structure prepared, and I've got, I've got actually some drawings, if you want to see that we actually really do have them prepared.
I believe you.
Okay. Well, unfortunately, in this process, a lot of people apparently don't.
You give them to us after, how about?
Okay.
Where does the pipe drain to?
It, it actually, it holds the wa, the design is, the water comes in through catch basins, through a series of piping, into the structure that holds the water underground. It releases the water into the system right where that, there's existing parking lot at the corner of Cambridge and, oh yeah, great. Cool.
Look at you fancy.
Okay. There is an exist, this parking lot is existing, and this was the old Dollar General store, it's demolished. There is an existing catch basin right there that drains into the street going down Plainville Road, or it goes down this way, but that's the drainage. We are going to put in a vault right in here that all of this will drain into, but prior to being discharged. The amount we discharge into this system is restricted, less than what is currently going in, and we're holding it all in that vault. Over time, because we basically go from about a 12-inch down to about a 6-inch pipe that goes into it. Over, we fill this up, over time, it drains down, so at the next rain event, we have that capacity again. And we're going from a required 56 to a designed 84,000 cubic feet, excuse me, 8,400 cubic feet of storage.
Okay.
And that will basically store all of that area and discharge it at basically pre-development five-year storm levels.
Okay.
And that's, that's your.
It's very helpful, thank you.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Sorma Dumas.
Thank you, Madam President. Trustee Kubicki, is he still here?
I'm sure.
He is.
Okay. But you can stay for a second, I was just looking at some of the pictures.
I have no idea what picture.
Okay, well, it's okay, I'm just going to tell you what I got from the pictures.
Thank you.
So the Dollar General, there's a proposed development for that area where the Dollar General was torn down?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
In, in the compromise that was made, originally, we were wanting to put a new facility that was a complete dealership. We have said, okay, we have to put a new showroom in, because we have additional requirements of the, of the various manufacturing brands, so we have to construct a showroom. We are constructing a showroom where the old Dollar General was, at approximately, I mean, within a couple hundred square feet, of the size of the old Dollar General. It just realigns.
So you're planning on constructing that, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And it's in, it is in the.
Dollar General parking lot and all the cars that are parked there currently.
Okay.
You can see it if you like. So the overflow that's there, is that what you're planning on taking over to the new development, all these cars that are there, are they waiting to go to the new proposed development? Or what are you going?
No, those, those are cars parked in the, in the Dollar General parking lot.
Correct.
This, this parking lot that's right.
So as you build, all of these cars are not going to be over there in the Dollar General parking lot?
No, those cars will have, while we build this new, this new showroom, those cars need to be over, over in this area.
So it's contingent on those cars moving over to that new development plan, is what I'm trying to say. Where would they go?
Well, it could go offsite if necessary, but, but in, the intent is to be able to continue to operate the, the business, we, you need to have sales vehicles, cars that are, that are going to be sold on the site, and that's why, that they would go there, and then once those new, that new showroom's built, those, those cars supporting that. Basically, that, that vehicle display area will support the entire development, because part of our agreement with the Porsche, there is, there is inside the Porsche currently about a 40-some car indoor storage area, display area, not storage, it's display. They don't keep them there for, for months, they are trying to sell them, but they, but they, but there is an indoor display area in there that we will now have to develop services, service areas and that type of thing in there, and those cars will be displaced and have to come outside.
Okay.
And that's what's going to go in.
And the proposed development should hold how many cars? I want to make sure I got that right.
The proposed development.
The parking lot that you're asking us to approve?
Right, that's, it's on there, I think it's, I think it's 62 cars or something.
Okay, I'm asking you to make sure I have the number right. So it's 62 cars?
Something like that.
Okay, and I'm looking at all these cars over there, so. I don't know if you answered my question, but it's okay.
Well, if you look here on, on this, if I can make it, make it work, oh, this parking lot will go, what's in there will go out there, and you can see it's twice as big.
That's what I was just saying. So it's an overflow from there will go over to what you're trying to get approved.
It won't be overflow, it will be the vehicles from there will go there, yeah.
Well, this is.
Those won't still have all of those vehicles in there.
It is an overflow, if you're building a new center there, all of these cars will not stay there. So these cars will go to the new development area, am I right, or not?
Yeah.
Are you going to leave?
Okay, in, in general, that's right.
Okay. We'll move on, how about that? Trustee Kubicki, if you could just come forward. Hi, and I do like you, I mean, I don't dislike you. Just wanted to make a comment. You had mentioned as it relates to future development, what do you tell people, you know, that we would have to go with you to the meetings, and so every circumstance, of course, is different, and so we encourage new development, so just wanted to let you know that any questions that we are asking is not because we don't support or we do support, but that's our role as President Dreehouse, is that we're just kind of getting all of this. So please don't take it as a lack of support, because it certainly isn't. At the same time, we represent the residents and the businesses to be able to ask those critical questions, so that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you for your work. That's all I have, President.
Thank you. Commissioner Portun.
Madam President, thank you. I'm going to, I guess, touch on the three issues that I articulated at the first iteration of the hearing, and then that I've spoken with others about. And whoever speaks, either from the standpoint of residents who are opposing this, or the proponents, maybe have them both together, whoever the right people are to come up and answer it, I'd like to just offer that as a process by which to get to the bottom of this. There are, for me, three issues that we need to make certain are addressed, that are in front of us. First has to do with the stormwater issue, or else, at least, that'll be the first issue for me, is the stormwater issue. And I just want to say, it's my understanding that at the end of all this, there will be a final engineered, and county engineered, participated in, and proposed in the county stormwater district being connected with this also, that is housed with the engineer's office. A stormwater retention, detention proposal that will both address the issue of making sure there's no incremental impact from a drainage perspective, stormwater perspective, onto Cambridge or into the yards or basements or garages or whatever of the adjoining residential structures, and that there will also be an engineered, proposed element of that designed to deal with the existing stormwater issues that exist today without there being any new development having occurred, because there was no requirement for there to be a stormwater detention, retention solution when this site was originally developed. So at the end of the day, we're going to have, as I understand the conversation and what's been presented to us, a stormwater solution that will make certain, A, that any new development won't cause more flooding and more drainage problems, and B, that the existing flooding and drainage problems are going to be dealt with, all right? And that that's going to be the, the final stormwater element, which should be a plus-plus benefit to everybody here, both sides of the equation. Now, am I right in that that's what's going to be the outcome?
Well, can I?
Who, I said whoever, you know, proponent, opponent, middle of the road, I don't care.
Yeah.
The problem is, Plainville Road's pipe is undersized.
Yeah.
Okay, that runs down Plainville Road and by the Madison Place Fire Department, it ties into the sewer that goes over to Whiskey Creek.
Right.
And I believe that's where they're going to tie into. The problem there is, the rest of the neighborhood, Grace Avenue, Bramble, Cambridge, and the city part of Madisonville, Madison Place, goes into that same, is that going to back up houses that way? That's my concern at this point.
Sure.
I think what he said is correct, but the pipe's going down Plainville, well, that's a county engineer street, that's a county street, so that's going to be at the county engineer, but the pipe's undersized going down Murray, and it ties in underneath the Marymont Tennis Court, and it's undersized, and that's what backs up, well, the houses that you've seen, the basements flooded, that's, that's the main part of Madison Place, and that, our storm is, our storm drain is drained in that, it's all undersized. That needs, that one time, it's got to be, it's got to be upgraded.
Well, yeah, and I, and I know that from the standpoint of general riparian rights, that you cannot add flow that's going to cause a downstream problem. So at the end of the day, there's got to be a stormwater plan required by law that is going to make certain that the existing situation is not exacerbated at all, and that new development is not going to further exacerbate the existing situation, and if it can be designed in a way that will improve the, the situation as it exists today without any development having occurred, but with the footprint you've got, that would be everybody's preference, if something like that could be done. So I, I think that, that what I'd like to hear is an assurance relative to the whole stormwater issue, that, that those elements in whatever chronology is the right way to take them are going to be addressed and be a part of this development.
Well, as to our water, you know, and I'm, I'm going to say some things, and hopefully I'll have the, the engineer and everybody here to yell at you.
It ought to be a simple answer, honestly.
Well, well, but, you know, but from an attorney versus an engineer. It's my understanding that with the development of the larger detention area, that, one, any runoff from. any runoff from our area, you know, will not at all exacerbate the existing situation.
Right.
And in fact, because it's a larger area, may have some effect to lower the impact of the stormwater runoff.
Right.
Now, as far as the broader scope that Mr. Ty is talking about, you know, that's, I don't know if that's the trustees or-
Two thousand and sixteen, the township did a comprehensive, a plan study, which I gave, you guys got the plan I gave.
So, yeah.
They know what the problem is. They know where the problem is.
Right.
And it gets into Marymont, too. Marymont area floods, too.
Well, listen, I'm not saying that it would be the developer's responsibility to, on their dime, to enhance, you know, what is an existing problem that occurred because governmental bodies, when development took place over the years, did not require a stormwater detention plan, okay? But we may have an opportunity here. So number one, there will be no impact in a negative way by this development from a stormwater perspective. Number two-
Correct.
If in what you are doing has a beneficial impact on the existing flooding-
Yes.
You, you know, you want to engineer it, make sure it's engineered in a way that that can also be accommodated. Number three, though, to deal with the larger issue, Mike, of stormwater drainage here, I think it would be incumbent upon the county and the township to also put their heads together to see if, when things are under development and construction, if there might be some additional way to address with public contribution to address the broader stormwater issues that are plaguing the community as it exists today, Marymont, Columbia Township, et cetera. Okay? So, and is that-
Is that responsive? I mean, I just want to make sure before we sit down.
I want to make sure I haven't misstated anything in terms of what the outcome is going to be here.
You have not. What is proposed will improve the existing and accommodate the expansion.
Got it. Okay. And trustee Kabiki, or President Kabiki, you would have no objection from the township's participation. I'm not saying that, I'm not asking you to commit to dollars that you haven't discussed with your other trustees or anything like that, but you would have no objection to meeting with and having your appropriate staffers meet with the engineers for this development and with the county stormwater district and engineer's office to see if there might be some way to engineer this in a way, either for the same cost or with some additional public funding that might be available, I don't know that it is, but it might be, that would further improve the entire situation from a stormwater management perspective. Would you?
Of course we would, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Second issue, and thank you all for that, responding to that. Second issue I'm going to touch on is the buffer zone versus streetscape. Number one, it's my understanding that what has been proposed is consistent with the existing master plan, but yet that you have also proposed doing some additional work that may not be required under the existing-
It goes beyond or modifies the basic requirements, yes.
Right. That said, there, it seems to me that there's an additional element of a desire to even further explore some additional options that would further enhance buffering or streetscaping. Is that right?
Well, it's my understanding that what had been considered was along Cambridge Avenue, that rather than just the flat, what I'm going to call streetscape or sidewalks, that we consider birmingham that area-
Yeah.
You know, to raise the height, but then it would also raise the height of the trees and everything else.
And some people have talked about whether there's a need to maintain, you know, sidewalks to nowhere and whether that could be further taken advantage of to enhance streetscaping or buffering.
And I believe, if Mr. Ty is still here, I hope, but-
He is.
But I believe in his testimony, he made some comment about, we don't need the sidewalks.
Right.
And that makes possible the birmingham of that whole strip. And I-
It's the right of the law.
Yeah. Right. Right. So there's, so there's a, yeah, it's a large, a large-
It's three foot there and maybe more, you know.
Correct.
But it would have, you know, that area-
That would have a positive impact on what's already on the table.
Yes. It's a change that we have to go through and-
Yeah.
As far as I know.
The township would have to address that also and probably the county engineer's office also, but, but-
Lot of support.
Very good. Okay.
I would want to know if the residents are in support of that. That seems, it does seem like a different conversation. I don't know that, I don't have a sense of that. Yeah. So be curious about-
I would say that I live across the street, and I am all for as much screening of cars, doing away with the curb cuts that go out on the Cambridge period. I think if it's going to be a business, it should be a business that's off of Plainville Court or off of the Business Court or not off of my side street in my residential neighborhood.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate that. Okay. Thank you. And again, trustee President Kabiki, the township has no objection to considering that and working to accomplish that. Very good. Very good. So that leaves us now to the third issue for me, which was sort of the master plan and whether there is consistent understanding of or agreement to the master plan as it currently sits. Seems to me that over the years, this master plan has gone under some revision or reiteration and that there has not been a real opportunity for there to be planned, public input sessions on to whether the existing master plan is, should be revisited in some respect or not. And it seems to me that that would be appropriate as well for there to be some consensus agreement that that master plan does get revisited. Yeah, I found it interesting, some of the testimony and concerns about parking or the expansion of the business might lead to employees parking more on residential streets, that that would take away the ability for business customers of other cottage businesses or small businesses in this residential neighborhood from accommodating their customers as well. And I don't know if those businesses are, if that's all in areas that are zoned in a way that those types of businesses, consistent with zoning or other township regulations, can exist or not out of homes. I know that there are communities where businesses operating out of residential structures is prohibited. I don't know if that's the case here or not, but in any event, it sounds to me like this would be an appropriate time to revisit the master plan, get public input on that. That would probably go a long way as we look prospectively in the future to try to alleviate some concerns about future expansion plans and whether that's consistent with what the township and the residents and the citizens the township want or don't want in terms of this broad master plan. And it would be a great opportunity for the business and the residents in this immediate area to come together in a structured way and try to force some dialogue between them that, and maybe out of that, they, and I'm speaking in extremes here and somewhat tongue in cheek, so don't take it literally, but maybe out of that process, Wiesty is no longer viewed by the adjoining residents as the three-headed beast of destruction in the community and the residents adjoining the business are not viewed as obstructionists to commerce in Columbia Township as well, but you have a better understanding of each other and your concerns and through this planned, designed, master plan revisitation option, there might be a way to develop better consensus around what the future is going to be, both in this general vicinity and elsewhere throughout the township. And I don't know if there's a willingness on both sides to do that, but it seems to me that what I've heard is that there seems to be a general feeling, A, that full acceptance today of a master plan adopted a decade and a half ago or more might not be there, and B, it might not, you know, now might be the right time to revisit all of that and in the process to maybe get a better long-term plan for this area in particular that both sides would agree to. Is that something, trustee, that you think the township would be willing to undertake? And I would ask both of the residents and of the car dealer, the development, whether that's something that they'd be willing to participate in.
Absolutely. There are constituents, and so we would absolutely be open-minded to listening and updating the master plan in especially this segment of Madison Place that's most sensitive to it.
All right. Mr. Carroll, on behalf of the developer or someone else?
I'll speak on behalf of the- And yes, I mean, if the plan needs to be revisited, you know, we are part of the community. I mean, and so, yeah, we would.
Okay. And I don't know if there's a spokesperson or spokespeople that want to talk or if those who are here are even unified on this issue or not, but, because I'm not sure that you are, I think some might see this as good and others might still be opposed to it. But can anyone speak to this?
Say something in regard to the buffer business.
Well, I'm talking about, I'll get back to that, but I want an answer to this first.
Okay. Yeah, I think everybody's willing to revisit the plan. I don't see why we would not be willing to do that.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy, is that right?
I just want to say that, I mean, I have no problem with the plan after I really learned it. I mean, it does talk about, in this area that's highlighted in blue on the legend is neighborhood-oriented businesses. This is not a neighborhood-oriented business. The Dollar General store was a neighborhood business. That's been taken out. He also bought some businesses that were on the other side of it that were small neighborhood-oriented businesses. They were eliminated to make parking so he could switch the parking over to Dollar General. So he's taken several neighborhood-oriented businesses away and we're putting in auto malls. This is not Beachmont Avenue. This is a small, walkable community. We need what the plan said, neighborhood-oriented businesses. And on the whole thing, on participation from the residents, I have a copy of a newsletter that the township sends out. And there's a little down there that says, "To get involved in planning for the future, call this number, express your interest in participating."
Yeah.
You will be asked to provide your specific interests, background, and experience. For the average resident, that's pretty off-putting. I mean, now, I'm pretty, I'm pretty versed in zoning and all this stuff, but before I wouldn't have been. I've been like, yeah, I don't have any say. So just saying, it needs to be-
Well, I don't have, I can't do anything with that, Mr. Kennedy. All right? We weren't involved in that. We didn't hear, we didn't know. But we are here today. So my question of you is, is the fact that you were off-put in 2016 going to serve as a deterrent to you being participatory in this today?
Not at all.
All right. That's all, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
Can I say about-
Yeah, Ms. Cameron.
Yeah. The difficulty with the parking area, the storage area, is that there's no way to know it's going to end. That the possibility is real that they will want to develop it farther. Even now, on that new car showroom, there's a thing for a garage to go out into that parking area, which will reduce the space of that parking area for those sixty-whatever cars, so that there'll be a tendency to want to go farther. And that will have the effect of possibly destroying the neighborhood.
No, I'm well aware of that possibility. It's why I'm raising this issue.
Yeah. I mean, you say there's nothing to stop it.
Is that, is that, you know, I, there isn't today, all right? And it's consistent with the plan today. But I believe that one of the ways to try to address concerns about, you know, this overall area is to reopen the plan process and for there to be, you know, a formal process whereby the residents are involved, the dealerships are involved, other concerned Columbia Township citizens and residents are involved in businesses and the trustees, but that there to be some formal process where you are dialoguing with each other about and expressing all those ideas and all those issues and all those concerns and take advantage of this opportunity to try to see if there is any way to further consensus build in the, in the community or not. But I don't think you're going to get a concession out of the dealership today, nor do I think it's necessarily our power or our jurisdiction to state affirmatively that as a condition of moving forward on this, that there shall be no further development in this area. So, you know, I think that's, that's going to be dealt with and should be dealt with through a process that is undertaken by the township in a way that is fully transparent and open to full citizen participation. And you begin to talk through and try to hash through these issues in ways that's best for the community, the existing neighborhood and residents and businesses, and in a way that also serves the best interests of the township. And I think the township is in a better position to address that than we are right now. So, okay. Thank you, Ms. Cameron. Yep.
I just wanted to take, say, thirty seconds just to expand upon parking that I brought up sort of later about the Wiesty parking on the side streets. There is ample parking in that neighborhood, okay? If you go up, there was a woman last week that spoke, she's at the corner, she's at that exercise place at the corner of Plainville and Bramble. She has a huge parking lot, which I, as many times as I've ridden past or walked past there, there's plenty of cars in there. So there is ample space for Wiesty's parking, for Wiesty employees to go park in that parking lot. They should absolutely not be on our side streets. Again, we're trying to either leave that space for the residents to park or to bring, as you mentioned, the small businesses that are on those streets for those people to come in, their patrons to do that. There was one other thing that I wanted to mention.
She answered your question.
This was the first I've heard today of a new restaurant possibly coming in to the old firehouse. I'm very excited by that. I'd love to have new businesses come in. This building has been vacant for years. Parking-
I understand, ma'am. You're going way beyond my question with all of this.
Okay. I just wanted to let you know that there is parking in the back of that building. There is parking across the street. This was for the firemen.
I think those are issues that you can, if a new process is set up, I think those are issues you can raise within that and work on that. There are a ton of neighborhoods, I know in the city of Cincinnati and other communities, where they have residential parking programs in place that are approved by ordinance of the governing body and so on. That's outside of our purview, but that's well within something that can be raised and discussed locally. All right? Thank you.
I just wanted to be aware that there was other parking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That's it, Madam President. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We have then a couple of options in front of us. We can close the hearing and ask for a resolution from the administration, but it would have to be related to some of the questions and concerns that we have raised. Or we can extend the meeting one more week or continue the hearing one more week to round out what would be included in the resolution and then ask the administration to get the resolution together. I have mixed emotions about this, as usual, because you all have taken a lot of time to be here, and I'm grateful for that. I wonder if we could do it without an additional hearing and make sure that it is circulated to everyone so that the concerns are addressed, related to the questions that we had, or we can extend the hearing. But I am, I am one commissioner, and I'd be interested to know what the rest of you think.
I'm willing to close the hearing, Madam President.
As a matter of fact.
Okay. So we will close the hearing. We will have the administration bring a resolution forward. It's going to have to be something, obviously, that we all concur to as the commission, and it'll have to be answerable to the questions and- it'll have to be answerable to the questions and concerns that we've had, okay? So, and we'll review that before next week to make sure that we don't have another delay, because I think I can speak for both sides and that we would like to see some kind of resolution here. So, all right, so I will move that we close the hearing and ask the administration to bring a resolution forward at our meeting next week.
Second.
Yes.
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 Okay. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. Thank you. We have, we're going to move to public comment. Blasta Molak is the only one that has filled out a speaker's card that is on an issue unrelated to our calendar. He has the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
You made me wait for two and a half hours to get to speak, but I'm glad because...
That's because the public hearing was scheduled for 1:15. So, but I appreciate your concern there.
Sure, but anyway, I'm starving. I've been living in Hamilton County since 1981, so it has been a long time. And for most of this time, I have known Todd Portune when he was a council member. When I moved into county in 1981 from New York, the sales taxes were, I think, under 5%. And when we bought a house in 1982, the real estate tax was one-third of what your auditor claims is now. It had gone up far beyond inflation and especially in 2000, which coincided when you made this fatal decision of yield into blackmail of the Bengals and then Reds to build them stadiums at our expense.
You're saying I did that, Blasta?
Huh?
You're saying I did that?
What?
That might be a mistake.
I didn't say...
You said that I did that?
No! No, no, I'm just saying.
You just said you did that.
The proverbial yield.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Anyway.
None of us did that.
So, it seems to me that we are serving, or you are serving, as elected officials, sport team owners and developers far more, and also people who have children out of wedlock and expect to live on the expense of working neighbors, at the expense of middle-class or lower-middle-class people who had saved their whole lives to have their houses, and then they have to pay much higher taxes because you have to give tax breaks to all these developers with all kinds of phony indexes. Anyway, whatever, I don't think it's right because it's taxation without representation, and that's in 1776 led to Boston Tea Party, so...
Thank you. All right. We're going to move to comments and motions of the commissioners. Commissioner Sumo Dumas.
Madam President, I'm going to pass and wait till our following week of our meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Portune?
I have none today, thank you.
All right. I have one, and it's in, it's in response to what happened in the hallway prior to the meeting, and I don't mean to belay the conversation other than that I do, I do, because I have a statement that I would like to read. Commissioner Portune, as all of you know, conveyed that he is not running for reelection and is suffering some significant health difficulties, and I cannot, I cannot without saying something to that. So, I'm just going to read a quick statement to convey my thoughts surrounding that. So, Todd Portune has stood tall in this community for decades, serving the public with an unmatched dedication and enthusiasm. He has also been my friend from the time I worked for him as a legislative assistant at City Hall to present day as we sit together as colleagues on the county commission. It has been my honor and privilege to serve beside Todd, who has taught me the value of integrity, thoughtful deliberation, and decisions based on what is right and what is just. I wish Todd all the best as he moves into the next phase of his journey. Just a heartfelt statement on the occasion of your press conference.
Madam President, I was not aware what the press conference would be, but I'm sure I'll have some statements to make in addition to Todd and his career here as county commissioner.
And I'm sure there would be additional opportunities to do that. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Administrator Aludo.
Thank you, commissioners. I would have one by leave. I believe Todd Long is here. We do have a by leave in your packet of resolution to adopt modifications to the Hamilton County Stormwater District rules and regulations. So, Todd, I don't know if you, we discussed this a little bit last week, and if you want to go through it in a little bit more detail prior to consideration by the board?
Well, can I, can I interject? I have no objections to this. Do any of the other commissioners have objections to this?
I have none.
I have no objection.
I do feel like we had a thorough explanation at the last meeting, which I'm very grateful for. Thank you for doing that. Is there anything you'd like to say, knowing that we're all supportive?
Well, I would just, I would just like to say that I mentioned to Todd when he was here before, if he could just be specific on what the changes were, and you were very specific on this last, and I appreciate it, so, thank you.
Yeah, we did have an updated version in front of us. All right. So, I am going to move that we approve of the resolution to adopt modifications to the Hamilton County Stormwater District rules and regulations.
Second.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Thank you, Todd, for being here.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, commissioners. That's, no, there's the only by leave, say, other than just to also just, I also just wanted to say a personal note to Commissioner Portune and thanks for, I think Todd and I have worked together now for going on 20 years or so.
I think that's right, Jeff.
Yeah, so, at least very, very close to that. So, obviously, a lot more work to do, but I look forward to continuing to work to you and working with you and wish you all the best.
Thanks, Jeff.
And it's on behalf of myself, as well as all the administration and department heads, a number of people that have passed that through indirectly to me, to you, just in the past hour is pretty incredible, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. We have a number of regular agenda items, items one through seven. Are there any questions or concerns about any of these items?
No questions, Madam President.
No questions.
All right. I'm going to move to approve then of regular agenda, oh, I'm sorry.
I couldn't say it.
Yeah, my bad. No, regular agenda item is just number one. I apologize. So, is, who's here?
Bob.
Okay, Bob, Bob Pike. Now, Bob. Just because we did it once doesn't mean we're going to do it again. Okay, let me, so this is a resolution awarding a contract to the lowest and best bidder, A&amp;A Safety, Inc., for the 2019 thermoplastic and epoxy pavement striping program located in Hamilton County, Ohio, project number 501915. It is pretty straightforward. Are there any questions or concerns about this?
No questions.
No questions.
All right. So, I'm going to move to approve of regular agenda item number one.
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Now, on to items number two through seven. I heard no comments or concerns, so I'm going to move that we approve of consent agenda items two through seven.
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. We have one executive session today. I'm going to move that we go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G2 to consider the purchase of property for public purposes, the sale of property at competitive bidding, or the sale of other disposition of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit-for-use property.
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.